I'd like to welcome everyone to a commission meeting this morning. We'll have an invocation by Commissioner Gibson, pledge allegiance by Rhonda Kippen, and thought of the day by Commissioner Ebert, and we'll go to that point.
Our Father which art in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather here today in this capacity as public servants and community members here in Weber County. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. Father, we ask a blessing upon us at this time that we might do and think and produce good results in all that we do. We pray that thou might guide us in our efforts. We pray for each and every member of our community, each person that resides within our borders, for their health and well-being and safety. We pray for our nation, as we know it is a difficult time in so many ways. We pray for the leaders of our nation, state, and community. Please help us to do the best that we can to be involved at whatever level possible to make the world we live in a better place. We thank you for all of the many blessings that thou bestows upon us in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Let's have a couple of quick quotes for you today. The first from Henry Ford. He said, "Coming together is a beginning. Staying together is progress and working together is success." And as many of you may be aware, that Arnold Palmer passed away yesterday. So this was a saying that he had. "The most rewarding things you do in life are often the ones that look like they cannot be done." That's it.
Who's Arnold Palmer?
He is an amazing car racer. He was an amazing individual that happened to play golf.
Yes. He played golf once or twice. Okay, we're going to move right ahead to consent items. E1, request for approval to ratify warrants 409087 through 409347 in the amount of $4,667,555.29 dated September 20th, 2016. Request for approval of warrants 409348 to 409661 in the amount of $1,213,796.72. Number three, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $190,734.04. Number four, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on September 13th, 2016. Number five, request for approval of new business licenses. Number six, request from the Weber County Garage for approval to surplus garage equipment and vehicles. Number seven, request from the Weber County Attorney's Office for approval to surplus office equipment. Number eight, request from the Weber County Treasurer's Office for approval to surplus office equipment. Number nine, request for approval of change order number seven for Wardale Brothers on the Skyline Drive project. Ricky Hatch, it's all yours.
Okay, for purchase orders.
Oh, let's see, clerks.
Other side.
Other side, hang on. Hello?
Hey, I thought maybe-
I didn't know I could turn you off.
Message there, a little control.
Yes. Be careful.
Okay, good. Okay, purchase orders. We issued 44 purchase orders over the past two weeks for $191,000. Half of that, or $96,000, was for the library. That was primarily for books and materials. Eleven percent, or $20,000, was for hard, for the jail, and it was for hardware and software and work release locks, as well as uniforms. Eight percent, or $16,000, was for the IT department, and that was primarily Oracle software maintenance. $15,000, or another eight percent, was for the health department. That went to building repairs, vaccines, and diabetes materials. And then six percent, or $11,000, was for the recreation department for concessions. Now, for the warrant registers, we have two. Last week's warrant register had 261 checks for $4.7 million, so it was a high dollar amount, but seventy-nine percent of that, or $3.7 million, was for transportation projects out of the Transportation Fund. The bulk of that was 12th Street and 3500 West, but it also covered projects in Ogden, South Ogden, West Haven, and Harrisville. Ten percent, or $484,000, was for our transfer station, and that was for the disposal fees for the month of August. Now, this week's check run had 314 checks for $1.2 million, and this was spread pretty evenly among about eight different projects or sections. There were two monthly payments, our paramedic fund and human services. Sixteen percent, or $191,000 to paramedic fund, fourteen percent, or $169,000 to the human services. And then nine percent, or $105,000, was for the jail. That covered utilities, food, medical and cleaning supplies, and some counseling services. An additional nine percent, or $105,000, went to the public defender. That's just for the contracted services that we provide, or that they provide. Eight percent, or $96,000, were escrow releases to Ski Lake, and another eight percent, or $93,000, was for 911 dispatch, and that was primarily construction expenses to their building. Seven percent, or $81,000, was the monthly payment to Weber Housing Authority, and five percent, or $67,000, went to the CVB for their monthly payment. Sorry, CVB is Convention and Visitors Bureau. That's all.
Thank you.
You can turn me off now.
Thank you.
Leave his mic on unless we need to use it a little strategically in the future.
Yeah. Well, we'll think about it. Okay, that's our consent items. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we adopt and approve the consent items as stated.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll go to action items. Action item one, request for approval of report from Weber County Attorney's Office, victim's advocate on the quarterly statistic of the Voca Utah Office of the Victims of Crime Grant. Jamie Pitt was gonna do it. I talked to her. She's not gonna be here today, and so I can give that. We know we have one of our past employees there sitting in the audience, but I'll just run through it real quick here. This grant needs to be reported on, and what they do, and I'll kind of give you a quick little description of what they do there. So they evaluate cases, they notify victims of crimes, they help victims, coordinate with them to see if they can get some restitution and things being paid to them. The different crime categories they deal with is child, physical and sexual abuse, driving under influence, assaults, elderly abuse, stalking, other property crimes. So they help with all these crimes on to help with some restitution and help the victims. So, and I've been involved with law enforcement for a lot of years, and it used to be the victims really had nobody on their side to help them. And so this has been put together, this office through the state, and it's been a great thing. In 2015 to 2016, they helped 2,108 victims, and so it was an increase of 455. So it's an important thing that they do. We appreciate what they do, and so I will, unless the commissioners have a question, I know Commissioner Ebert's fully aware of it, but we'll just move on with the motion.
Well, the statutory requirement is that this be presented in a commission meeting, and we wanted to do that even though Jamie couldn't be here, right?
Yeah, they're in a training today, and it was, okay. Oh, they're in a trial. That's right. They're in a trial today, and that's why it's been on the schedule for a while. They had a trial, and so we didn't feel like we could move it because we need to make these requirements, so.
We hear this about every year, but it's always good to be reminded of the good work they do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the report from Weber County Attorney's Office, victim's advocate for the quarterly statistics report for the Voca grant.
I'll second.
Got a motion a second on the floor. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jennifer Graham, come on up. Got two things for Jennifer. Jennifer, request for approval of a contract between Weber County and Wasatch Slopes Chariot Racing Association for 2016-17 chariot racing season to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center. Jennifer.
Yes, good morning. Okay, so this is a, this is a contract for the entire season. They try to get in ten race dates is what they try for, depending on weather, and this contract is coming to you. It is fairly standard, fees with the exception of the stall fee. They are a six-hour, just day use only, no overnight, so we give them a discounted stall rate.
That's great. Been doing this for a while, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
We appreciate having them. This is not the Nationals. This is just the regular season.
Correct. This is just the local clubs on their Saturdays.
Hope we can get those Nationals again. That'd be great.
Yeah. We've got them in 2017, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'll make a motion then that we approve this contract between Weber County and Wasatch Slopes.
Second.
Got a motion a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Number three, request for approval of contract between Weber County and the Gruber Family Band for Entertainment 2017 Hoff Winterfest. They've been coming for a while, too.
Yes, they have. They're a good band. They have a great following, and we have lots of requests for them coming back. And this is just brought to commission because this is a self-promoted event. This is put on by our staff and a committee of volunteers from the community, even to the point that they're arranging house days for the people that come over, in the bands, from other countries and even from other states. So just looking for approval for the contract for the band.
So this is not to correct, because I don't know, but is it Hoff or Hoff? I can never remember. That depends on your German accent and which province you're from and how you actually say it.
Yes, so it's Hoff or Hoff, yes.
Hoff or Hoff.
Hoff or Hoff, okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the contract between Weber County and the Gruber Family for the entertainment of the Hoff and Hoff Winterfest.
You are definitely from one of the northern provinces.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion a second on the floor for something with Hoff or Hoff. So any more discussion? Hopefully not. Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. We got to do that one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
There's so many ways that one-
Where's Rhonda at? I see Rhonda here somewhere. Oh.
Jared.
Sorry, I changed the page already. Come on up, Jared. Request for approval. Yeah, I turned the page already and crossed that one off. We were so long talking about Hoff and Hoff.
Turn Ricky off and turn the page on me.
Yeah, exactly. Request for approval to approve the following right-of-way contracts for the 12th Street Project, parcel nine, 10, 12, 13, Randy and Anna Giardano. Parcel's number 14, Western Warren Water Improvement District.
Two more to be signed. So we got the Giardano signed, and then this district signed. So again, just a handful left on 12th Street. We've signed all contracts on 3500 West, so we're getting close.
Awesome. Wow.
Progress.
You guys aren't gonna have anything to talk about next year in commission meeting. They could be five-minute meetings. Well-
Not gonna happen.
They could if you would restrain yourself. They could be. Okay, we got a pleasure, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion we approve contracts for the following right-of-way on the 12th Street Project, parcels nine, 10, 12, 13 for Randy and Anna Giardano, and parcels 14 from the West Warren Water Improvement District.
Second. Got a motion a second on the floor. Any other discussion? If none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Okay, Rhonda, it's your turn. Consider an action on a request for preliminary plan approval of Fall Widow Subdivision Phase Two. Fall Widow, is that like wife number two, or I don't get this?
I don't know. I'm not quite sure. If it's more of a seasonal type of a thing, I'm not sure. So I don't know if you guys, do you got the packet?
I do.
Okay, so we can talk about visuals. I know, 25 pages. Really, the only relevant pages are pages seven and eight of the packet. But just to kind of refresh your memory, we brought this application forward. The applicant had appealed a decision, a recommendation by the planning commission to stub roadway to the east and to the west. And you got, and after hearing the code and the applicant's plea, the item was tabled on March 29th, given staff direction to see if we could somehow come up with something to make it so that we met the land use code and also addressed the applicant's issues so that it wouldn't become a financial burden for the applicant to move forward with this development. After multiple meetings with our legal division, our engineering division with the applicant, the applicant has redesigned the subdivision, again, going back to the seven lots instead of the, which is what he initially started out with. And what has been, what we have done is we were able to go to a couple of court cases and look at exactions. Exactions are legal as long as they are proportionately, roughly proportionate to the cost of the exaction and the public's extent, or expense to address the impact. And so what we did is we got a cost estimate from the applicant for the cost of the improvements, if he was to install the roadway both to the east and to the west, and then what it would cost without that. And it was deemed that it definitely was more so to, for him to put that in, grossly more so for him to put those improvements in. So what has been agreed upon is for him to dedicate us the right-of-way. So he's going to dedicate the right-of-way to the east and the west, but it will not be improved. What he will be improving is on page, if you look at your exhibit B, page eight, it's, he'll be stubbing to the north to create the rest of the frontage for lot number 11, and then he will be creating a little bit of a stub to the west for the Hammerhead turnaround for the fire department, and he will be improving 150 feet to create the frontage for lot 10. And so that will all be installed for the subdivision. The rest of the right-of-way will be left unimproved but dedicated so that we will not have to go through eminent domain in the future when it's deemed necessary to have that connecting road to go through. And so based on that, it meets the Nolan and Dolan test, which is the rough proportional, roughly proportionate to the, for the exaction of the dedication. So we, based on the new design, we've got support from our engineering division, our legal division, and planning. We feel that it meets the land use code to the extent that we can. And so with that being said, we are recommending approval of the revised design for seven lots based on the recommendations of all the review agencies and their requirements. We have two conditions. Basically, the first condition is that a capacity assessment letter and a construct permit comes in from the state of Utah for the drinking water, for the expansion of the water system, and that the final subdivision plat and improvement drawings will be submitted based on the revised proposal included in the staff report as exhibits A and B. And based on that, the primary finding to get to this is that the literal enforcement of the standard to install all improvements within the dedicated roadway is not roughly proportionate when compared to the cost of the exaction and the public expense to address the impact. So we know, you know, we've gone over how we can't really tie it to financial and economical situations, but in this situation, we could. We could, we could say it is too expensive for him to install that.
I think that it's, that's been a great process. I know we've, as I've been aware of moving through this, that I appreciate where we're at here. So, is the property owner here?
He did not, he was not able to make it this morning, so, but he is pleased and eager to get going forward. So, but we have, we've met over and over, and he put a lot of work into getting cost estimates for us so that we could, we kind of, that was our last straw, so we were kind of glad that they came in as high as they did. It really helped us out a lot there.
Great. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Like I said, what I really appreciate is that we had an issue and a problem, and instead of just saying too bad, we worked through a process to problem solve it, looked for a solution, found the exaction issue, spent all the time doing all the financial bidding and trying to figure out those numbers so that we could actually apply and work through the, through the Nolan and Dolan test to make sure that we met that, and so legally we can move forward. And so I just want to say thank you. I think the Nolan and Dolan test is a good test. I think the Hoff and Hoff test is also a good test.
I agree. I know it was tabled.
Okay, we're moving along here.
It was tabled for two weeks, but I wasn't coming back until we had a resolution, so.
Appreciate that, that the attitude is, let's make this better. Let's figure out resolution to this. Let's, let's make sure that we don't prohibit development, that we encourage it, but we encourage it in a manner that meets the zoning and other ordinances that we have. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And let's do it in a timely manner, I think.
I apologize. Next time, I'll try to get it done in two weeks.
No, I'm not criticizing. I'm saying I think that that's the attitude that we need to have, as Commissioner Ebert expressed, and I think, you know, that's one of the things that we do hear frustration from sometimes, not necessarily in this department, but in several of our departments, is that things are taking a long time. And part of it is because there's a lot going on right now. I mean, and our staff is overworked, but we're, we're working through some of those things.
It's been a busy year for everybody, but it's good. It's a good thing to be busy.
We appreciate, we appreciate your efforts down there.
There's 24 hours in a day. I expect 23 of them, and you got one hour on your own.
See, I was shooting for like 28 hours.
No!
We could get a good 28 hours out of the day. We could be caught up.
You guys are doing great down there. We know there's, we've, you've got a lot of extra things on your plates, and we appreciate that. So, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Let's move forward. I'll make a motion that we grant the preliminary plan approval for Fall Widow Subdivision.
Second.
Got a motion a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Number six, we're gonna hold till next week. Number seven, Braden Felix, come on forward up here. Request for approval of an easement agreement between Weber County and Summit Mountain Holding Group, LLC, for a ski lift to be built across a county road. Oh, it looks like it's Jared.
I'm in place of Braden today. What this is, is they came in with a new ski lift, and it is crossing the road. Of course, we checked the elevations of the crossing and make sure everything's done correctly, but what we've done with this easement is we've had several crossing easements that we've done for years now with Summit, so mimicked that easement, did similar things with that, had attorneys review and look at it, so that's coming before you. And this is that new, new ski lift they're putting in up there.
Awesome. Commissioner Ebert, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the easement agreement between Weber County and the Summit Mountain Holding Group for a ski lift to be built across a county road.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a motion a second. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, request for approval of a resolution of the Weber County Commissioners of Weber County appointing a representative and alternate to attend the USIP, Utah County's Indemnity Pool Membership Meeting. Not a swimming party, it's a membership pool. And Dave Wilson, our attorney, is gonna take over that one. David?
Yes, sir. I better pull this down. It's working. What are you even ears on? Utah County's Indemnity Pool, of course, we have a governing board. This is separate, this is a membership meeting they have annually. They used to have it down in Provo, I think, at times, but this year, and I think it was last year, is being held in connection with the county's conference, UAC conference. And so each year, the bylaws require that we appoint, I'm not sure why we do that every year, but we do, appoint a representative and an alternate to attend that meeting. All elected officials may attend the meeting, and you probably have many elected officials down there at the time, but the official representative, if there's any formal action needed, that official representative takes that. But it's held for the purpose of giving input from the counties to the governing board and acting on any business that needs to be done. So with that, we've prepared a resolution for the commission to approve appointing a representative and an alternate.
And the reason, if I could just add to that, Commissioners, the reason that they, that we appoint a representative for each county is because each county is not necessarily represented on, on the Indemnity Pool Board. Weber County, because of its size and population, does have a dedicated seat, but many counties do not. So the, so the USIP bylaws require each county to designate who might vote for them at this governing meeting. And so what we have done in the past is, is sent, authorize the person who represents us on the board to cast that vote. And in our particular case, Brad D., our HR director, was, is also serving on that board as a statewide appointee representing HR positions on that board. And so in the past, we have-
So did we put Brad on the board or-
No, that's what I'm saying. It's a state, it was, it's, it's chosen by the-
I think Dave wants to say something.
No, it's correct. It's the personnel directors, they appoint one person, and Brad every-
So he represents the personnel directors from across the state, so we've never appointed him. So we only have one appointed seat. I've been serving on that. So that would be my recommendation, is that, that we stay with that pattern, which would be that I would cast the vote on behalf of the county and that we, and that Mr. D. be our alternate. But I'm happy anyway, you want to do it. That's just what we've done in the past.
So he's the alternate in case you don't show up?
Which I'm gonna show up, and you probably are too, but if somebody else would like to be the alternate, that would work. It's just a matter of the fact that he's on the board.
What's the requirement for the alternate? Does it have to be a commissioner?
No.
It can be anybody.
No, that's why, that's why Brad has done it in the past as a member of the board, but we could send, it could easily, just as easily be one of the other commissioners if you would.
And the only reason we have an alternate is in case the, our vote doesn't show up. Just for the one meeting, the one period, so. So what's your pleasure, Commissioners? However you want to-
Well, I was just thinking, we have a new commissioner coming at the beginning of the year. Maybe we would make him the alternate. Commissioner Bell may be interested in being an alternate.
But he, we could him, but, because we can put anybody in, but he probably won't be at that meeting.
Why not?
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Maybe that would be some onus to have him attend. I'm open, I'm open to your motion, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's not really a motion. I just threw it out for discussion if you have-
I'm open to whatever, to your motion. I'm, I'm okay with whatever. I was just offering alternatives.
Yeah, and it makes the, there's, we can go a million, million different ways. I think Commissioner Bell describes it well. This is a one, this is a one-meeting appointment. So however you want to do it.
And if you don't show up-
Right.
And so I probably can't make the motion to move this thing along, but go ahead. I think, I think we could put, he's it, and we've got, Brad D.'s been the alternate, make Brad D. the alternate, because he'll be at the meeting anyway.
I'll make a motion that we keep the same structure we have moving forward this next year with USIP.
And so, and so that would be with Brad D. to be our alternate, and our, our voting person already is Commissioner Gibson.
Our board member.
What's the number on that resolution?
Thirty-one.
That'd be resolution thirty-one, putting Brad D. as the alternate at USIP. That's the, any other questions on it? We got a motion, we got a second. It's gonna be a roll call vote, so.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Bell?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Number nine, Holland, come on up. Request for approval of a resolution of county commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Weber County Ramp Recreation Arts Museum and Parks Committee. Ms. Willbanks, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having me. Today, actually, the request is twofold. It will be a reassignment of some of the duties within the board and then filling available board spaces. So I guess we can talk about our new board members first. We had eight open seats this year for Ramp, which was a lot, and only two board members that were up for reoccur, for, to renew their term. And both of those board members have served well, and, and the board does recommend to renew those two board members, that being Danette Pulli and Ann Perry. Then beyond that, we had 32 applicants for those eight seats, and the board has made some recommendations. They also did leave a little bit of leeway or room for your suggestion if you had some, some really strong suggestions on board members. I do have a list of recommendations from the board after the interviews that were conducted. Again, this has been an amazing process. Used to, we were begging people to be on the Ramp Board this- Um, again, this has been a, an amazing process. Um, used to, we were begging people to be on the Ramp board this year. We are interviewing thirty, you know, we had thirty-two applicants and interviewed, um, almost twenty of them, so, um, pretty exciting. Uh, the recommendations from the board at this point to serve on the arts and museum board would be Jolene Zito and David Owen. On the parks and rec, uh, division would be Tim Hunter, Colby Bos- Boswell, Steve Scoof, and Carla Woodard.
Those are the new names, right?
Those are the new names.
And to, again, reappoint Ann Perry and Danette Pully.
And, and Perry and Danette Pully.
If you ever watched football, you would know that's Cory.
I should not have stuttered over Buckwald. Sorry, Colby Buckwald. He was, he was fantastic. We enjoyed meeting him.
So can we do all this in one vote?
Yes.
Sure.
And so you need to tell us who the, the new chair's gonna be, because our outgoing chair is, can't be reappointed.
Right, his term is, has expired.
George has done a more than phenomenal job.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so I hope we do something nice for him, like name a park after him or something.
I can read the resolution if you want.
I'm happy to go through it. Um, Heather Carlson was our vice chair and the board recommends to promote her to the chair position. Um, beyond that, we have, uh, in the executive committee, a parks and rec individual and an arts and museum chair, and that being, um, Marisha Bosskeeter and Ann Perry respectively. And then we also had to have our advisory board and the board recommends promoting, um, Ryan Wilkinson, Jeremy Dunn, and Danette Pully and Raquel Lee to the advisory board.
Well, um.
Questions or comments?
I'm glad you gave us a little leeway here to.
There were a lot of great applicants.
Um, I think, uh, you know, you, we mentioned that there's a lot of people applying and I, I'm grateful for that. I think we've had some, because of that, we've had a lot of diversity in a lot of different ways.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of geographic diversity, um, gender, ethnicity, the whole thing. It's a great, it's a great uh, pool of applicants and, um, I, as I looked through them, um, it was really hard for me to, to narrow down, uh, you know, the, from, from just the applications. And so I, I, I appreciate the recommendations that the Ramp Committee sent forward. We took that a step further and, and asked for each of these to be interviewed, um, by our staff. Uh, the commissioners actually met with some, uh, and know some, um, I, the way that the resolution is written, there are at least two people, um, that I, uh, wish we could appoint as well, maybe more, um.
We agree, Commissioner Gibson. We would love to, maybe someday look expanding the board and adding more members, um, because absolutely there were some that were, were remarkable that we just didn't have spots for.
But I feel like we're in a position here, Commissioners, where we have, uh, extremely good and qualified applicants, um, you know, that we've, that we plugged into this resolution and, and I, I like the way we're going with the, uh, the chair positions. I think those are individuals who will do a tremendous job, uh, leading in that manner. Um, the, what did you call the second grouping?
The advisory committee.
Advisory Committee. Uh, that is looking amazing to me. I, and I, I just think, and then of course, all of these six, uh, below, well, there's two there that have continued to serve and then the six new ones. Um, I, I, they look great. I mean, I don't know any of them, uh, other than, than the screening process that we've been through that I just described, but I, I, I think they're tremendous and, and, uh, I, I'd suggest we go with the recommendations here at this point.
So I just make a quick comment. Um, this is, uh, so we've been, the counties, we're putting together our budget right now and we sit down and we get into the, I do, get into the very dollars that they're spending, wanting to know why something's changing a couple of dollars. This is three million dollars a year that we spend. And up to this point, the commission's gone completely along with everything Ramp has done. Three million dollars of money that has no specific task and it's not owed to anybody. It will be spent next year, three million dollars. Well, we never, as a commissioners, we don't have that in our budget. Our budgets are down to finite few thousand dollars and saving ten dollars here, a hundred dollars there. And this is a great responsibility and these folks, I've watched them work at this with Shelley and with Holland and been part of it. It's amazing what they do. As a matter of fact, I wish I could have them sitting next to me during budget time right now because they really get into this and they get into the pennies and dollars. Now, having you there is not that great. Yeah, probably. But these folks, I have been very impressed with the guidance and the leadership and they're not just out there wasting money because it's three million dollars. They have a clean slate every year for three million dollars to spend it wherever they want. And so I appreciate this group. Now, we make the final say, to this point, we have felt like they've done a very good job and been very careful with the money. And so it's a, it's a remarkable amount of money that they get some options on and what it brings to Weber County has been, you go around Weber County now and you're seeing Ramp all around Weber County on different things. And so it's doing some great projects and I appreciate what they're doing. I didn't understand that as a new commissioner, but as I've been here, it has been, it's been phenomenal. So I appreciate that.
Well, and I, I just want to, um, share a slightly different viewpoint, but I think it, I think we're saying the same thing. And that is just that, that they, I agree a hundred percent with the quality and the, and the detail of their work. Um, but we have to remember and remind ourselves that, that we can't just rely on their work only. And I think the commission, even though we haven't ever changed one of their funding recommendations to this point, the commission has that ultimate responsibility and duty to do our due diligence and make sure that they have done it as well. And, and my guess is there will be a time when we'll have to, when we'll have to make a change to their recommendation and I hope that, that they don't take offense to that, but, but the fact is, we, we appreciate dramatically their, their willing, willingness to do that and to make it absolutely the best, to give us the best recommendations, the most thorough thought-out recommendations that they possibly can. And to this point, I think they've been very, very good, so.
Absolutely.
So I, uh, I, I appreciate them and, and, um, in the end, uh, if it, if a bad decision is made, it's going to, uh, on funding, it's going to reflect on us. So we just have to remember, we have to watch that very, very closely and I think we have, so.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution number thirty-two as, uh, Red, appointing, uh, the, the slate of names as plugged into the resolution to the Ramp Committee in the different areas.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
Commissioner?
Okay. Oh, it's gonna be a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willbanks. Number G, public hearing. Request for a motion to convene public meeting and convene, to convene a public meeting and convene a public hearing. Yep, to adjourn the public, um, meeting and to convene a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Scott Mendoza, come on up here. Public hearing to consider and take action on a request by ZTA twenty sixteen oh two to amend the planned residential unit development PRUD chapter title one oh eight, chapter six, within the Weber County Land Use Code. Scott?
Commissioners, good morning.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you three as well. Um, this morning, the applicant that's with us today is Mr. Brad Blanch and you're correct, Commissioner. Uh, he has submitted a request asking the three of you to consider making amendments to the county's, uh, existing PRUD code. That's the Planned Residential Unit Development Code. And that is found in chapter five that sits within title one oh eight. That's all sitting within the county's land use code, so. Now, one of the things I want to mention to you is that the, one of the planning division's favorite things to do is come to you and present new, interesting and innovative code ideas. Today, we don't get to do that. And the only reason we're not doing that today is because today's amendments, they're literally a copy and paste from the county's existing cluster code. Uh, that's a cluster subdivision code that's within land use code today, so. Um, the amendments in summary, they have to do with providing for an open space plan requirement and approval process, uh, individual ownership and preservation methods for the open space parcels. There are financial guarantee standards, open space parcel maintenance standards, and, um, the last one really has to do with providing an increase in the existing code. Well, within the PRDs, within the county's PRD code today, it allows for a ten percent bonus density. The request is that you take it from its existing ten percent opportunity and increase it up to a maximum of fifty, which again is identical with the county's existing cluster code. Within the amendments, there are a handful of other, uh, changes or improvements, I, I would say. Uh, they consist of minor grammatical improvements and the elimination of bonus density in the Ogden Valley Planning Area. That tidbit is something that may be temporary. What we feel is important is that we take this item back to the planning commission and possibly bring that back to you for further discussion. What we want to do is determine exactly what should be done as far as an incentive to gain these, uh, benefits, these bonus densities, and put those in the code before we go offering them. Today, in the existing PRD code, there's really no criteria or any standard to be met to get a bonus density. But with these new standards, it's very clear, which helps all of us understand the directions that we need to go to implement the code and to, uh, to use it as a developer.
So you have, I don't know if the Commissioners want Bradley to come up and, why don't we have him come up? Is he here with you?
Yep, uh, yes.
Come on up.
So, the goal, I, you know, I, I think is to try to create some unique and creative designs within Weber County. Uh, the problem in looking at large parcels of property to develop with the existing cluster ordinance is that it creates, uh, parcels of property that become completely unusable, either agriculturally or for parks. So I know that the current cluster ordinance was just recently updated. Uh, it talks about units of approximately twenty housing units surrounded by seventy-foot wide swaths of open space or property. Um, to be able to use property in a productive and efficient way, those seventy-foot swaths become pretty unproductive to try to get anybody to do anything with them. So we've been looking at a parcel of property in Western Weber County that has approximately a hundred and sixty acres associated with it. And we looked at the cluster ordinance and thought, here's what we could do with that ordinance, uh, which isn't that attractive, isn't that unique. Uh, we went back to the drawing board and actually drew, hey, if we could do anything, what would it look like? And what we ended up coming ba- coming up with was a plan that still has the same open space uh, on this hundred and sixty acre parcel of property. You're still gonna have seventy to eighty acres of open space associated with it, but the open parcels of property become very useful and very unique. Um, one thing that we have been modeling against is a development that's, uh, down in the Arizona area called AgriTopia. And it has maintained a development theme that brings in agricultural elements with a friendly neighborhood environment, which is what we're trying to do and what will, hopefully, if this ordinance gets updated, be presenting to the county. Uh, something unique, something different, something that's attractive, but something at the same time maintains the agricultural environment that's, uh, in Western Weber County and what the heritage is, heritage is.
Perfect. Um, will you state your name and where your, your city?
Yes, sorry, Brad Blanch, uh, ten sixty east, thirty-four hundred north, North Ogden, Utah.
We won't have you repeat what you said. We'll just move your name to the front of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
No, I, I've been aware of this and, um, I think, I appreciate you bringing this forward. We don't, we don't find everything that needs to be done and we appreciate bringing it forward and I think our staff, um, has been good to work with to walk through this. And so I appreciate, um, what we've done there. I don't have any more questions on it unless the Commissioners do. If not, we're gonna open this up to public hearing and we'll let the public come up and make any comments. I'm hearing crickets. Public comment. Unless you have something else to say, Scott, I'm gonna go on to, um, come out of the pub, to come out of the, um, public hearing and go into our regular session.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion. Second.
I've got a motion and a second to come out of the public hearing to go to regular county commission. Number four, action on what just happened. Do you need an ordinance number?
Yes.
Number?
Thirteen.
Ordinance number thirteen. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
The que- I guess I still have a question where staff is on this. The staff isn't making a recommendation or they are?
Yeah, they have.
Yes, thanks for asking that.
You're welcome.
There's something I wanted to mention, uh, that is a, a planning division recommendation, which is a positive or favorable. And just to let you know, this is coming to you with a positive or favorable recommendation from both planning commissions as well.
Okay. What was the ordinance again?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirteen, taking action on a request to amend the planned residential unit development PRUD chapter titled one oh eight, chapter five, within the Weber County Land Use Code.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, it'll be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Bell?
Aye. Thank you. If you have any other spare time, they could use help in the planning office on updating ordinances, so we would love to have your help.
We allow you to work for free.
Exactly.
We love volunteer help.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that forward to us. Number H, public comment, public comment.
If you stand up, then you have to talk.
If you'll state your name and where you're from.
And if you do that first, then we won't have to move it to the first of the comments.
Oh, the editing is fun. I'm Cynthia Stedman, twenty-one eleven Eastwood Boulevard, Ogden, Utah, eight four four oh three. Actually, unincorporated. We needed an official title for up there, like, you in a Highland sounds awesome, but then, yeah.
Come up with a great name.
How about?
And a mask.
How about Ogden?
What?
No, we're not gonna allow Ogden up there. We're on our own.
Sogden, because it's like south of South Ogden, so you could have a soggy, yeah, okay, anyway.
Um, wow.
I'm here to follow up with you about the stop signs that we've been begging for along Eastwood Boulevard. Um, I did send an email, I think, on Thursday.
Got it? Yep.
And I was just wondering how things are going on that?
Sean.
And where we're at.
I know this wasn't on the agenda, but can I have Sean answer that question, Dave? It's more of an administrative issue.
Thought I had heard from Holland on this issue recently too.
Mm-hmm.
She's not here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Say your name.
Yes, uh, I have had two emails back from our.
Sean Wilkinson.
Thank you. Uh, from our county engineer and county roads director. And it's my understanding that once construction is complete with the Skyline project, uh, that there will be stop signs going up. So that is, that is my understanding at this point.
Tell us where, you know where they're gonna put them? They're gonna put one four-way stop?
I believe it's a four-way stop, yes.
Just on Skyline?
I don't have those details. I can, I can certainly set up a meeting, uh, or get Ryan and Jared together, um, with whoever you'd like me to and, and address.
They did a traffic study. Did you get that traffic study to her that they did?
Uh, I have not passed that on.
Let's send that to her and tell her what we found in that.
Okay.
And then, um, I do know they're gonna put a four-way stop in Skyline and Eastwood, but I haven't heard that they're putting any other four-way stops in.
And that is my understanding at this point, correct?
That, that's what I think the understanding is up to this point. Okay, thank you.
Okay, in, in my conversation with the, um, county engineer, he indicated that this, um, the traffic study was done primarily to ascertain the speed and that the, that it came back, that it was, the average speed was twenty-six miles an hour. Now, when I, when I came last time and I gave you my concern sheet, I should have listed it differently than I did. I put A plus B equals C, which is our primary concern. I should have put, you know, C is our primary concern, which is the safety of our children crossing this street. Jared Way and Eastwood is the most dangerous intersection in our, the one that we're most concerned about is, is at Jared Way. Um, we're most concerned about is, is at Jared Way. Um, we have, I don't know, I've, I've counted up to sixty students crossing right there. People don't stop. And that's, that's why the speed is an issue, is because of this crosswalk that is not being acknowledged by drivers. So we were hoping that we could get a four-way stop there so that people would actually have to stop and then go through the crosswalk instead of just going straight through it. Um.
Engineering has been, they've been, I've been, kept a little appraised on this. They've been working on, on what they're gonna do. They're pretty confident they're gonna do one at Skyline and Eastwood. And they haven't, I haven't seen a final decision what they're gonna do in the next intersection. They did the study, but it was a speed study. You're right. That's all they did was a speed study.
Okay.
And so, um, we're still working on it and, um, we've, we've talked about other options, possibly a crossing guard. And I understand that's only would be during school time. We've talked about that as a, an option. We have a couple of crossing guards we do around the county. So there, it's partly is what's happened there is with Comby Road closed, it's moved so much more traffic down there. And that's, that's where, th, that's my concern is it's moved so much traffic along that road that a lot of folks normally wouldn't use that road if, if Comby Road was open. So.
Well, except for this is the main drop-off point for the school. We have people coming through this intersection to the school.
That is true.
So I don't believe that the amount of traffic for school hours and for children crossing during, you know, to and from school is going to change because the people are still dropping off and picking up. And I, like I told you before, I did start making calls on this as early as April, seeing as how I moved into the, the neighborhood in January. You know, this was an immediate concern for me. And in talking to my neighbors, we have people as far back as eighty-four, uh, principal that was at Wasatch, Wasatch Elementary. She says that, that this has concerned her since nineteen eighty-four. I think that the problem is, is that we've not had enough people making enough noise at the same time. And that's why that this has been kind of glossed over. The secretaries at the school say that they get calls every year for as long as they've been at the school. So I, what I'm asking for is, is a total of a thousand dollars because, um, stop signs installed according to Intermountain Traffic Signs in Salt Lake, installed, we're talking a hundred and eighty dollars per stop sign. And so if we're already doing the ones at Skyline, you know, we're, we're talking less than a thousand dollars to ensure a safer crossing for our children. And I would, I'd really appreciate if we could just, you know, like, Skyline's great, but Jared Way is our main concern. And, uh, so I'd, I'd like to know what our next step is. I've never done anything like this before. I have no idea how this process works. And so I would love to have a little direction here. Is, we've, we've started a petition, but is that really the next step that we should be taking? Or is there something else that we could be doing here?
Sean, go ahead. Carrie?
If Sean's got something else to say, I'll follow up.
Commissioners, I'm happy to, uh, meet with Ryan and Jared today. I'll be meeting with them and, uh, we can have this discussion. Uh, it, it's not quite as easy as just going and putting up four stop signs. We understand cost-wise, we could do that tomorrow. There are some other things, traffic flow and, and other safety concerns that we need to look at. Let me have that discussion and I will get back to you this afternoon.
Thank you.
And I would just say by, um, by way of addressing your concern, I, I, this is not getting glossed over. I, I, I think, uh, we, we, we are hearing you. I've seen three or four emails come across on this issue. Um, Commissioner Bell, I know, has, has taken a personal interest in the issue and is, and is paying close attention. So I'm, um, I'm gonna leave that primarily to you, but I, but I'm, we're all listening. We're all hearing.
I, I hear all of this about traffic flow and I, I obviously, I don't know much about traffic flow, but I do know that this is a residential neighborhood with a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone.
Yeah.
So I don't understand how traffic flow plays into it as much because like I said, I don't know about traffic flow. Is that really an issue in a residential neighborhood? I can understand on Washington Boulevard that this would be a huge undertaking because of how it would tie up the road clear down, but.
Well, there's a book about this thick of engineering standards and, and, uh, it's really hard to vary from those, from those standards. And so we have to, we have to make a really solid case, uh, if we're gonna, going to vary from those standards. And, and it doesn't mean it can't be done, but, um, actually it might be even thicker than that. Uh, but we, we just have to look at each case individually and I think.
Well, and I just, really quickly, we have to be kinda careful because we don't wanna create a bigger problem. Many times what happens is people view crosswalks as rightaways for them. They look at stop signs as rightaways for them. And if we create, uh, within children's minds that they have a right-ofway because of the crosswalk and because of a stop sign, and then they just use what they consider a right-ofway and someone misses a stop sign and runs through it, we could create a more serious situation. We want the pedestrians or the children to be more cognizant of traffic. And so sometimes having a heightened expectation for them for their safety creates a safer situation. I think that's what, uh, engineers are reviewing as they move forward on it. I'm just giving you the facts. I'm, I'm just giving you the facts. I think they're working through that. I think that's why the book is two or three inches thick because the data has indicated sometimes by trying to do things that create crosswalks, we actually create a higher, um, expectation of right-ofway and we have more accidents. We have more pedestrian fatalities. So we wanna make sure we're doing the right thing moving it forward. I think our engineering and our planning are working on that to make sure that what you're seeing is being reflected and that to make sure we're not creating, um, a situation where it becomes actually more dangerous. And so I think they're working on it and I think that they're gonna come to a resolution.
And look at the crossing guard. We need to look at that as a viable.
Both of the students that were hit in the last sixty days in crosswalks were not during school hours. And, and that's, I mean, how many students are we sacrificing? How many children are we sacrificing to make sure that we don't create? These people, like the, the lady, the little girl by Bonneville High School was at a two-way stop. She waited and waited and waited and finally thought that she had a clear window to cross. She crossed and got hit by a car, went to Primary Children's Hospital.
Yeah.
I have not been able to get any more information than that, but I, I understand that these things need to be done properly, but I would invite any of you to come sit on my front porch from eight o'clock in the morning until eight forty-five and look at what is happening. Because I understand that we've had a traffic study, but I'm here as a eyewitness that has watched this intersection every morning. It is a huge problem. We are having people get near misses. I, I have been almost hit by a car in this intersection after I, as a cognizant adult, stopped to make sure that I had a clear way to, to walk across the road. I'm.
That's what my point is. And I don't wanna get into an argument. That's what my point is, is that you had a higher expectation, you have a higher expectation of your own safety. So you were watching the road to make sure no cars fell. We want to be careful. We don't create a right-ofway expectation in the children's minds where they walk off, they expect and they just walk right across. And someone misses a stop sign and we have these type of accidents. I'm just saying that we, through engineering, what through Sean is working on, is making sure that we're not making the problem worse. It may not be stop signs. It may be something else. It may be something else.
That we use. Maybe we have a crosswalk with the flashing button where the lights flash and really get people's attention. There's other methods we can use to provide safe, safer corridors. We're just looking at all those. We don't wanna make it worse. And so we are cognizant of it. I know Commissioner Bell and Sean, they're working on it. Um, we understand your concern. I've worked in law enforcement for twenty-plus years. I've been on fatalities. I've been on, with children that have died in car accidents from pedestrians and, and so forth. So I completely understand this, but I also don't wanna make it worse. Sometimes anecdotally, this seems like the best thing to do, but we wanna make sure that the anecdotal also is backed up by what the data is. And so we're working on it. We understand it. I think you'll see some resolution fairly quickly on it. Cause I know that it's in the process.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. I'm Julie Clark, uh, twenty-three twenty-one Comby Road. And I'm also a parent, um, at UNT Elementary and I walk my kids through that intersection. And I also am very concerned about it. It, it is a funnel. You know, everyone's funneling to the school and right through that intersection. And I really appreciate you guys taking the time and really listening to Cynthia. And I'm glad it's on your radar. Um, I also wanted to point out for traffic flow, I've noticed at the two-way stop there, that quite frequently there are, um, five to seven cars backed up trying to turn left because, um, because it is a funnel area and the, the ones on Eastwood have the right-ofway and they don't, you know, they're non-stop. And then you have people waiting for their turn and nobody's quite sure what turn it is. And then you add into that people having to stop for kids to go across. Um, it just, I think it would clarify who has the right-ofway better to have a four-way stop sign there. Um, and then I believe we're also, um, would love a crossing guard. And, um, and you guys said there's probably a pretty soon resolution with it. When does the budget have to be approved by? Is there a possibility it can be approved with this budget?
Yeah, we're, it's not an overly, but it's not about the money. I can guarantee it's not about the money. We, we, we have the money.
Okay.
It's one of those things that we could make an adjustment for if we needed to.
Okay.
I'm not worried about the money part of that. We just wanna make sure it's.
We may do it tomorrow.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else on public comment? If not, I will go to number I.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
We got a motion, a second to adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you.